Pledge, have a full quorum this morning with three members in attendance. We had the opportunity to review the December meeting.
Ma'am Chair, I'd like to make a motion to accept the minutes as presented.
Second.
Mr. Johnson, do we have any changes to today's agenda?
Yes, ma'am Chair, for your consideration, we have two items we want to remove. The first item is I-1A-1, this was an independent contractor agreement. Staff has actually worked out a suitable resolution of this issue that's going to cost us significantly less money. So, we're going to pull this off the agenda and save that money. And then, the second one is removal of I-1B-4. This is a Sugar Creek booster station, and we just need a little more time on that one. So, I would submit those to, for your consideration to remove, and the rest of the agenda, we're ready to go.
We will make those changes and move forward. Having no presentation or consent agenda items, we will begin with Mr. Gordon.
Good morning.
Good morning.
First item we have for your consideration is a proposal from ISM to provide engineering services for a pipeline cleaning program we have, which is called pigging. And we're looking to clean basically a skip manganese out of our distribution system, and it'll help with our dirty water complaints. So, we're looking to set up this system to clean all lines that are 24 inches and larger, primarily the ones close to our plant and leaving our plant in the 500 elevation system. And ISM's proposal is for 6% of construction costs. We estimate that at about $3 million. And so, their fee will be $180,000, and staff recommends approval of this proposal.
Is pigging done with ice or?
No, this is, ice is only good for smaller lines. So, these are 36-inch, 30-inch lines, I think we have a few 24. And they're also, so we need to use a sponge pigging technique, which means you have to have construction done to install launch stations and receiving stations to remove the pig when you're done. And we have to have locations where we can discharge or remove, you know, we're talking millions of gallons of water, we either going to have to put on the ground or in our sewer or somewhere. So, we have to have a plan for, you know, how to handle that water also.
I saw that part of the cost was the design of the launch stations and receiving stations. So, that's done upon the first time that you need to.
Yeah, that's, that's a one-time process. Yeah, so that's, that's kind of phase one of it. So, first of all, you have an engineer to, to design those, do a contract to construct them, and then you'll have to come back for a proposal to have a company come in that can, can launch the pigs and receive the pigs for cleaning the line. So, there'll be several different companies involved.
There is a pig meeting.
What is the lifespan of this equipment?
The equipment, yeah, the life of the pipe will be the launch and receiving stations will be the life of the pipe. But the sponge pigs, they usually tear up in the process of cleaning. So, I mean, we won't use those again, so they're kind of a one-shot deal.
How much does it cost to run this?
To run, probably per line, you know, we're looking at maybe over three years to get them all done is, is what we're thinking right now. Maybe $250,000 a year to get the sponge pigging done over three years. And then, we can take several years off and see if we need to do it again.
So, after three years, we've done the lines that we wanted to do, do we, I mean, you don't sell the equipment?
No, these are, we're not buying any equipment. This is a company that contracts to come in to pig the lines.
Okay.
All we're doing in this phase is we're installing the launch and the receiving stations.
The launch, okay.
So, those are permanent, it's just hard piping and valves is all that is.
Okay, I misunderstood, I thought there was some equipment involved. Okay, that makes sense.
Second.
Second. So moved, next.
The second item we have is just our annual renewal on software for what we have, our smart covers. We own 23 smart covers. We use these to, to put within our sewer system, to monitor sewer flows and maybe troubled areas, look for potential leaks and ionized the system. And so, we have, this is just our annual software support and warranty. So, it's for an expense of $29,373, and staff recommends approval of this renewal.
Move to consent.
Second.
So moved, next.
And the last item we have today is an item or is a contract agreement with Blue Water Engineering Services for Hunter's Ridge Lift Station. This is one of the lift stations identified in our master plan. It is an old Smith &amp; Loveless system, which is a unique system because the pumps sit on top and it vacuums out of the wet well. You typically have small wet wells. We have way more usage and cycling of the wet well than normal because it is a four-foot diameter wet well. Our minimum in our spec is six. Very old lift station, it's just in need of replacement. So, we're contracting with Blue Water to do us the design to replace this lift station at expense of $25,000. Staff recommends approval of this proposal.
Cost to actually replace it?
About, their estimate's $390,000. Three, 390, if you heard me.
So, they were laughing also.
Oh.
Uncle move the pig.
On the.
Move to consent.
Second. So moved, thank you. Cytus.
Doing well.
Good.
Morning.
Morning.
The first item we have for your consideration is a public hearing on the proposed abandonment of a portion of a parcel at Wheeler Road and Flowing Wells Road. This is a remnant parcel from the realignment and the interchange that was created about 28 years ago when they did the interchange over I-20, or the bridge over I-20. This was a, there's .65 acres was remaining when they realigned the road. And according to the original deed from 1962, I believe, if it says if any portion of that parcel is no longer used as roadway right-of-way, it shall be deeded back to the, the parent parcel it came from. The Flowing Wells project is, is nearing completion. The property owner that owns the parent parcel has asked us to look at abandoning it. We've met with county management, we've met with staff, road construction. We've all decided, we've met with the county attorney. We've all decided that we no longer need this portion of, of property. It's just a maintenance issue. So, outside of .02 acres that we want to retain for maintenance of Flowing Wells Road, we'd like to abandon the remainder portion, .63 acres. So, with your permission, we'd like to open up a public hearing, and staff will document any comments.
Thank you, we will open up the public hearing at this time for anyone who would like to speak on the matter.
Here. Goes back to Lazar, whoever owned the property before.
Yes, sir.
Right.
And no money would change hands.
Right, yes ma'am.
Oh, we gotta do it different, okay.
I'll close the public hearing at this time, thank you.
And the next item is Resolution 24-02 for the same. Final resolution regarding abandonment of portion of parcel 078B051P at Wheeler Road and Flowing Wells Road.
Move to consent.
Second. So moved, thank you, next.
The next item is a public hearing on the proposed establishment of Streetlight District for Carrington Subdivision. This neighborhood approached us and staff received a petition to take over the, their existing streetlight infrastructure through the creation of a streetlight district. We informed them that they needed to make sure that their streetlights were up to standard, up to our standard, and also any agreements with Georgia Power reconciled from a financial standpoint to ensure that the county's only paying for the cost of the lights and the cost of maintenance. We've been able to verify that's been done and are ready to bring it before the boards to do the public hearing for that. Open up the public hearing, staff will document any comment.
Thank you, at this time, we'll open the public hearing for anyone who would like to speak on this matter. Being done, we will close the public hearing.
The next item is Resolution 24-08 for the same to establish a streetlight district in Carrington subdivision. Staff recommends approval, this would of course need to get. Would be a fee imposed.
Debate.
Second. Moved, thank you. Next.
This next item is for Speed Hump installation on Old Belair Lane. A little history here, a few years ago, when the Jackson Heights neighborhood was being developed, working through planning review, staff realized the impact of the additional traffic on Old Belair Lane at the intersections with South Old Belair Road. And requirement of the county was the staff make a $250,000 contribution to the county to improve the intersection of South Old Belair Road at Old Belair Lane's southern intersection, that intersects in two locations. That intersection's since been improved. The thought process was if we improved the, the south intersection, that one's nearest Jackson Heights, and it's a wider section, that, so that's where the traffic's going to go. However, since then, the intersection's been improved and we've seen significant usage of the north-south leg of Old Belair Lane from the Jackson Heights residents. That section of road is much narrower, it's only 18 feet, and it has some horizontal curves, which creates some sight distance. So, we, we, working with county management, we studied this, the speed on the north-south leg and did a study before the intersection improvements at South Old Belair Road, during those improvements and afterwards. And ultimately, the combined 85th percentile was at 85, I'm sorry, is it 35 miles per hour? So, they're, they're speeding, that's what our current policy says. And with our recommendation that we install speed humps on just the north-south leg to slow down traffic on that narrower portion that has the curves in it, and additionally, try to funnel traffic toward the south, the east-west leg, the south, the southern intersection, where the intersection is improved, the roadway is wider, it's more conducive. But if you do take the north, north-south leg, the speed humps will be in place, requiring you go slower, not speed on that portion. So, it's with county staff recommendation that we install speed humps only on the north-south leg.
Have the neighbors commented on this?
We've, we've been in contact with the residents along that corridor. We've had meetings out there, Commissioner Skinner stopped by one day when we were meeting with residents. And they, everybody that I've spoken with, the staff spoken with is, is for the speed humps.
We do have someone who would like to speak on this matter, if you'd like to come up at this time, Mr. Dale Sickles. Morning.
Morning.
We'll set your name and address for the record, and you will have five minutes.
Dale Sickles, 4870 Old Belair Lane, down George, obviously. Thank you for your time, I really appreciate Kyle and the entire committee and the commissioners actually approving the conditions on Old Belair Lane. As Kyle mentioned, the south intersection has greatly improved the safety at that end. We were hopeful that it would actually redirect traffic there, and it doesn't seem to be the case as much. Also, the paving, although we got maybe a foot extra on it, it's, it's really improved quite a bit, made a lot safer and more comfortable drive. I see that we've got the criteria for speed humps, and that's very, very encouraging, but it doesn't tell all of the story. And just for brevity and clarity, I gave you a image of the northern end of Old Belair Lane. I'd like to share some of my experiences there. As you can see, coming off of Old Belair Road, it's 35 miles an hour. And as soon as you come on to the, to the lane, it's actually a very minor angle, and you can come speeding rate 35 starting. There's a red circle there showing there's a dip of a 5% slope there. It actually encourages people to speed up, not to slow down. Immediately start to go into and outside to a left turn, and, and there's been instances where there's problems. You see a little cross there, that's where a gentleman died from a car accident there, hitting a tree. Numbers one and two show where people have actually driven into the drainage ditch in the front of my property. Number three is where a car ended up hitting into the culvert of my driveway. Number four is my mailbox, where it's actually been taken out by another accident. Number five shows a tree that used to be there, it's now dead and gone because a tree, a car actually took it out. So, the combination of the speeding on there, in addition to that turn, it's creating a lot of accidents along that, that side. In addition to that, my wife and I mow grass right along that outside bend as well. There's been at least five instances where we had to jump out of the way to keep from getting hit by cars. My wife actually experienced, experienced one hitting her clothing the other day, which wasn't very comfortable. So, I just want to emphasize that above and beyond the traffic study, there are significant problems on this, and we really encourage this. And I'm hopeful that in addition to slowing people down, these speed humps are going to, again, direct traffic to a more safer intersection at the southern end. And with that, I'd like to close with a question, is do the speed humps automatically come with signs at the, on the, both ends that would also help deter the direction of people traveling as well as speed?
Yes, sir, they're, they would be speed, uh, placards at either end, signifying the locations of a speed.
Well, I would very much appreciate you approving.
Commissioner Skinner, do you have any comments to add to the conversation?
Cytus can also explain some improvements we did at the north side, if you'd like, to slow what Mr. Sickles was explaining.
Sure, I'm not sure if you have the, so the, the north side, so where the, the black arrow is coming off of the south, South Old Belair Road, it's currently a very large apron approaching Old Belair Lane, which is basically a straightaway coming off South Old Belair Road. Since this photo was taken, this area was taken, we've come in and we've cut out, we've removed, saw cut and removed a good portion of that apron to allow for still a right-turn D cell lane, but it's not a straightaway. So, we've taken out a significant portion of that to try to channel traffic through a right-turn D cell lane before they turn right onto Old Belair Lane. As Mr. Sickles mentioned, we've since resurfaced both legs of Old Belair, Old Belair Lane, as well as performed the intersection improvements at the southern intersection. And at Lake Royal Drive in Old Belair, I'm sorry, Lake, what's the, there's a private road right at the Jackson Heights entrance, Royal Springs, thank you. Coming out, looking to the left, the wood line was grown up to the roadway, the edge of pavement, and we've had roads and bridges go in and clear out a significant, a significant portion of that wood line to improve sight distance. We've, we've done a tremendous amount along Old Belair Lane. In addition to, South Old Belair Road should be surfaced in the coming weeks.
Thank you. Second.
Second. So moved, thank you. Next.
This next item is an independent contractor agreement with Rhythm Engineering for NSYNC coverage plan and warranty. It's for $47,908.15. It's from November 1st of 2023, October 31st of 2024. We just realized when Rhythm contacted us that our former, our previous agreement was outdated. We have not lost coverage, they've maintained contact and, and been there for us as we've needed them. However, it is passed due, and, and we would like to go ahead and execute this agreement. And I've asked staff to set a reminder before this, three months prior to this one ends, for us to contact Rhythm, and I'll wait on them to contact us. Staff recommends approval.
I assume we're still pleased with the system?
We are, yes, sir. They, they, when we have issues, they come down, they ride the corridors, they work with us and our traffic control center to ensure everything's operating correctly and make adjustments as needed. Lots of.
Richmond County uses this as well, do they not, in certain?
On, on some locations, Washington Road under the habit.
Move to consent.
Second.
So moved, thank you.
And we'll be back, what, in June for the 24, 25?
I've had staff set a reminder for August. This one ends in October, so months prior to it ending. We're going to reach out to Rhythm, make sure we have an updated contract, and bring it back. The next item is for fiscal year 2024, Safety Striping Project A, contract with Midstate Construction Striping Incorporated. Striping is spelled unusual, but that is correct for the name of the company. This is for, as you can see, it's for Rose Lane, Gateway Boulevard, Canterbury Farms Parkway, William Smith Boulevard, North Old Belair Road, General Wood Parkway and High Tower Drive. This is the first of two, maybe three, striping projects this year. Each year, the board sets aside $300,000 for striping, this is the first. Staff recommends approval, funded out of IPF.
How often do we have to re-stripe roads?
Last year, we actually pulled the last, the second re-striping project because we didn't have a good list. So, we evaluate them throughout the year, and as striping wears out, whether through wear and tear from vehicles or, and/or the sun, we re-stripe them as, as we notice they need to be re-stripped. Additionally, DOT re-strips a lot for us, and then, of course, when we resurface a roadway, it gets re-stripped. So, not that often, and like, like I mentioned last year, we didn't have to do all the striping projects, we didn't use all the budget. So, we just try to keep a tally on what needs to be done and, and take care of it when it comes up.
Not a set schedule, as needed.
Replace the reflectors when you?
Yep.
Years ago, we had a good bit of re-striping done, and the color of orange was odd.
I thought it was great, I thought it looked wonderful. That was a, that was a DOT project, DOT did that one, not us.
You didn't get.
It was a bad batch of thermoplastic that they got.
It was ugly.
They gave it to us.
We don't get to pick the Pantone color of the yellow or whatever.
Traffic yellow is what it should be.
Very good. Second.
Next.
This next item is a change order number two for Lewiston Road widening project with ER Snell Contractor. So, this is a little bit unique in the fact that this is for the construction of a driveway, a parcel owner's driveway. The parcel is at the threshold between where the Lewiston Road project ends and the Herford Farm widening project begins. Herford Farm Road widening is under design now. However, we've already gone through property acquisition with this, this property owner, and they've signed an option for additional roadway improvements to their driveway. Due to how their, their current driveway is configured with Lewiston Road, doesn't, it's not very conducive to access to and from Lewiston Road. So, with the new option that they've signed and the board's approved, we would like to go ahead and extend the roadway out for Herford Farm Road widening project so that they have better access to and from their parcel. The change order is for 53,000, which includes all the work, the embankment, the asphalt, traffic control, et cetera, required to install this driveway.
Is there a home on this parcel?
There is not, and that's one reason the property owner has asked us to improve the driveway so that he can get in better access to and from the parcel for home construction.
Clearly, this is one that you and I actually met with.
I was gonna.
Found a solution that he's agreeable to.
He's agreeable?
Have it in writing, we have it in writing, agreeable to this.
Okay, good, because I thought this sounded familiar, all right, good. Thank you, because I know that was probably not an easy thing to negotiate, I appreciate your help. Move to consent.
Second.
So moved, next.
This next item is supplemental agreement number one with DOT for CDP Industrial Boulevard, Oakley Perkel Road, Old Wheeler Road, Park West Drive, South Old Belair Road and Wrightsboro Road resurfacing. This is just a housekeeping supplemental agreement to, to adjust the budgets to the bid prices. Staff recommends approval, this would be ultimately a reduction of $533,440.59 for that project. But savings in the bid price.
Next.
The next item is similar, so when we bid out the original TO, to Group Two, the roads we just discussed, the bids came in lower than we expected, so we added a few roads to it. Therefore, we had executed an additional agreement with DOT for those additional roads, which included Government Center Way, Faircloth Drive and Library Drive. Because we had an, executed an additional agreement, additional supplemental agreement for those roads as well. This is for an additional 144,410.70 to that contract, again, a housekeeping item. Staff recommends approval.
Move to consent.
Second.
So moved.
The next item is an independent contractor agreement with Cranston Engineering for a roundabout design related to the Herford Farm Road widening project. So, currently where the Cox-Gibbs intersection is with Herford Farm Road, as you know, it, it has a severe skew. Current design, the AECOM's been working through, is realigning that skew. It doesn't correct that skew all the way, but it improves it. We've had to acquire a significant amount of right-of-way to perform that realignment. Uh, staff realizing we have that much additional right-of-way, reached out to Kekin Wood for a third-party consultation on what a roundabout would do in place of the traditional traffic signal. And we had them do a study, the study showed that the traditional traffic signal would reduce delay in the opening year by about 20%. And in the design year, which is about 20 years after that, it would be a, it wouldn't be, it would actually be a worse delay in the opening year. However, with a dual-lane roundabout, we would reduce delay by over 80% in both the opening year and the design year. So, it would really improve this intersection. We believed it, based on the amount of right-of-way we've acquired, we could build a vast majority of this roundabout off-system, so not have to impact traffic. And then tie, tie the system to it after the fact, which would save the project considerably. So, AECOM is doing the, the existing design on the Herford Farm Road widening, the larger project. Cranston actually works for AECOM as a subcontractor, doing specific design components with drainage. And instead of slowing AECOM down on delivering the final project, we'd like to engage Cranston to do this kind of independently, but also working with AECOM as well. So, that's why we reached out to them. They provided a proposal for, to do, the design services for the roundabout of $89,160, and staff recommends approval, it would be funded out of House Bill 170, which is currently the funding source for the project.
Move to consent.
Second. So moved, thank you.
Similarly, this next item is an independent contractor agreement with Cranston for design services related to the Herford Farm Road widening project. This is for designing the section of roadway between Lake Gene Drive and Lawrence Drive. It's currently a two-lane portion of roadway, environmentally sensitive areas on either side. Extends culvert going, basically an equalization pipe between the two bodies of water. It is in bad shape, it's dilapidated, it's corroded. We would like to advance the replacement of that pipe ahead of the project, but also widen that section of corridor because it's kind of a choke point. And doing so, we believe that one, that can be removed from the larger project, but also would improve the construction efficiency of the larger project, which hopefully will bring down bid prices. So, we reached out to Cranston to do, sign for the replacement of that, that culvert, as well as widening that section of road. And they're proposed, they've proposed to do that for $72,795. Staff recommends approval, funded out of House Bill 170.
Move to consent.
Second.
Next.
This next item is an intergovernmental agreement with the city of Harlem for the delivery of the Clary Cut Road, Old Union realignment project. We're asking that you approve entering into this agreement and allowing the chairman to execute it once county management and staff and the city of Harlem have all come to an agreement on what the components of that agreement are. The history on this is we've had significant issues with the intersection of North Fairview and Old Union at Appling Harlem, which is an unincorporated Columbia County. We've talked to GDOT about trying to find some funding for improvements there, and, and they have not had a great amount of, significant amount of luck getting back to us on that. The deputy county manager, Mr. Schlotter, actually said, hey, this TIA project, TO2, Clary Cut Old Union realignment affects that intersection. Let's see if the county can deliver that project, bring it in under budget and fund our intersection project. So, what we're asking is for IGA with the city of Harlem, for the county to deliver their project. We've identified some cost-saving measures to reduce it by about a third, the length of the road going from about 6,000 feet to about 4,000 feet. And with those savings, we can then improve our intersection as well and do it all under the same umbrella. The county would also get a 3% administrative fee on top of that. There's currently 6.4 million program for that project. There's currently 6.4 million program for that project. So again, we're asking for your permission to, to work through this IGA with the City of Harlem. Staff recommends approval.
Harlem has agreed, though.
We've, we've met with Harlem, Commissioner Couch set up that meeting and attended, and they're, they're agreeable and excited about the county getting involved.
Second.
No moved, and thank you much for your work on that. Next.
This next item is acceptance of improvements at Highland Lake Section Two for the road storm, water and sewer systems, along with the associated easements and right of way. Those, all the ponds will remain private. Staff recommends approval.
Second. No moved, next.
This next item is acceptance of easements for Whispering Pines of Evans Homeowners Association off of Georgia Pine Trail. This Whispering Pines, this is a 20-foot sanitary sewer easement and infrastructure for a new daycare in that area. Staff recommends approval.
Move to consent.
Second. No moved. Next.
The next item is the acceptance of easements for Furious Ferry Development at 1,000 West Lake Common Drive. This is for the acceptance of a permanent utility easement. There's two actually, and the abandonment of a water easement. Staff recommends approval.
Move to consent.
Second.
This next item is acceptance of easements for Bird Farm Estates. It's off Lewisville Road, just south of Anderson Farms. This is for the acceptance of two waterline easements. One is actually a waterline easement, the other is basically a blanket easement over the right of way for the county. Staff recommends approval.
To consent.
Second. Item.
And the final item is Resolution 24-111 and a project delivery agreement with GDOT for resurfacing 14 county roads. The list is there. Last year, we did two separate TIA two group resurfacing projects. We did project one, project two, both budgeted about $5 million at the request of the TIA office. This year, we asked the TIA office if we could bind them and just do one project estimated at roughly 10 million, and they were agreeable to that. So this is for the resurfacing of Evans Stilox Road, Blackstone Camp Road, Blue Ridge Drive, Harlem Grove Town Road, Blanchard Road, Columbia Industrial Boulevard, Halleley Farm Road, Industrial Park Drive, Oak Street North, Old Trail Road East, Trail Road West, Pleasant Home, Roswell Drive and Southern Pines Drive. This is the PDA for the county to deliver that on behalf of DOT.
And a lot of these intersect with Furious Ferry. Will we wait till Furious Ferry's done and the state's either way before we do these? Are those, we can do it at the same time? On the Harlem Grove Town Road research, is that just the county?
Whole portion, yep.
And we'll contact the cities?
Yep, they, they know it's coming. We've already spoken with them and Commissioner Malir. So we'll, we will resurface those roads up to the Furious Ferry Road right of way, and then when they pave and finish Furious Ferry, they'll tie into it.
They'll tie in? So we can go ahead and do Blackstone Camp? Several of these have been, there's, the folks who live out there are wearing us out, so that'd be great. Do we have it, once this is accepted, do we have an ETA on when these might start?
We would like to advertise these in the next two to three weeks, so another month beyond that, so a couple months before we have bids, another month to execute an agreement with the board, and probably another month, some bid.
Very good, there'll be some very excited people. Move to consent.
Second.
No moved. You have any legal matters? Staff reports.
Yes, ma'am, I have the year-to-date budget report and the water and sewer construction reports for your review and prepared to answer any questions.
I only have one. Item number 646, project, done?
It is not done. We are, we finally got the chemical skid in this past, I guess since last meeting, which was sent back about six months ago because it didn't have the right materials on it. And so that's installed, the, we're ready to accept peroxide with one exception, the tank, the peroxide manufacturer said the vent on the tank is not large enough, which I designed a tank, so in my defense, I sent them a copy of the drawings before it was bid out and they did not have any comments on it. So we have to have that fixed. I'll find out tomorrow at our weekly update meeting whether that'll be done by next week when the, when Trojan is supposed to be here to do startup. So we're scheduled for startup on, on the Blanchard plant next week. So I'll find out tomorrow, I'll ask going, but we're working through, we're working through all the hours. They keep sending us hours and we keep explaining to them that they don't meet critical path and giving it back to them. So we're working through what they think their time extension should be on this project. So it's kind of been a little bit tedious and we've had a little bit of trouble making our point to those guys, but I think we're about there.
The date, the date was?
Yeah, we, we're supposed to have done startup and substantial completion on there by then, but we're hoping to have startup done by February, or April 1st before our busy season, and then after that, it'll just be finishing paving and cleanup items. We should be able to operate it by then. They have missed every deadline they've given us, so I'm not holding a breath on that one, but that's where we're supposed to be. Yes, sir.
Are we, are all the property acquisitions for the Uji Creek?
No, I believe there's still three left, if I remember correctly.
Executive session items look at, and it'll go to the full board, and I think there's three that have not come in front of y'all at all.
Yeah.
Very close to having those ready to come to y'all.
Yes.
Last question on the road. Sheriff said we couldn't put the camera, plate reader cameras on I-20 exit, specifically Lewiston Road because it was under construction. Can we place those now, or do we still need GDOT approval to?
Well, we've worked that out. We've actually worked that out with, GDOT has turned that over to the Department of Public Safety, and we've worked with the Colonel of the State Patrol to, to get that approval. So we've gotten that approval now, Mr. Blanchard's moving forward with all that. So we should be getting those cameras out pretty soon. We've been able to leverage some relationships.
Mark.
Yes, attached are the reports for the roadway improvement projects and roadway resurfacing projects. I will address any questions.
Don't have any questions.
Do we have any public comment or commissioners' comment? I have two executive session items, how would you like to proceed with those? Do we have those to the full board?
Second.
No moved. We'll adjourn at 9:33.